Hi, could I have... Hello? Good evening, how are you? Could I have everybody kind of sit down, please? I'm sorry for the delay, we're a little late. On behalf of the onset protective league, I would like to welcome you to the pre-town meeting for tonight. But first, I would like, if we could just very quickly have our two new selectmen that are here, Ellen Begley and Mike Schneider, stand up. And also, to my right, our new deputy moderator, Joe Ashley. We have an issue here with the sun streaming in, but that should change momentarily. I will be turning the meeting over to town moderator Claire Smith, who will walk us through the evening. Thank you all so much.
Thank you, Nan, and thank you, everyone, for being here tonight for our town meeting preview. As you know, there has been a few issues over the past week, and in looking at the articles for town meeting, I am going to ask our town council to give a little explanation as to how we will be proceeding with town meeting, and explain to you that the reason tonight that we will not be speaking about any money articles. So I'm going to turn it over to town council Rich Bowen.
Thank you, Madam Moderator, Rich Bowen, Town Council. I've just spent the last two hours with the town administrator and the auditors, who are very busily going through the books to review the materials that the former town accountant had left for us to take a look at. It's going to be the recommendation of the administration, and I believe the board of selectmen will be looking at this recommendation as well, that all of the monetary articles, any article that requires the expenditure of money, be deferred until a subsequent town meeting, probably about May 23rd. So, as you go through the annual warrant, at least half of the articles call for some sort of expenditure. The thinking behind the recommended delay would be that when the budget gets to town meeting, or any article that requires expenditure gets to town meeting, that we will have wanted the auditors to go through, do verify all the numbers, and all the sufficiency of all the appropriations that are put forward to you, because it would be, well, you can characterize it any way you want, but it could well be an exercise in futility to go through at this point, and try to base a budget until we know whether the numbers that the former town accountant had left are good. That work is proceeding even as I speak, the auditors are upstairs right now working on the question. There will be a number of articles that certainly don't require expenditure, and will be available to be acted on, but again, the recommendation will be, let's see what the auditors have to say before we go and spend any money.
Thank you. If you will just bear with us, this just all came to be in the last hour or so, so we're going to try to go through the warrant, it might be a little slow process for me. We weren't aware of this until just a while ago, so I'm not sure exactly what numbers, we're going to take them one by one, and Rich has a list of what articles we will not be acting on, and we will skip over those. So, I apologize, Mark Andrews is upstairs making some copies of the warrant, if you don't have a copy, he will be down shortly with some copies. So, Article 1 is basically the article which deals with our annual election, and that has taken place, and as Nan said, we have two new selectmen, and we have a new deputy moderator. Article 2 is to see if the town will vote to authorize the board of selectmen, and/or the town administrator to apply for, accept, and enter into contracts from time to time for the expenditure of any funds allotted or otherwise available to Wareham by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, or the US government under any state or federal grant program or activity, or to do or act in any manner relative thereto. This is a housekeeping article, which authorizes the board of selectmen, or the town administrator to accomplish the legal and administrative details necessary to enter into agreements and contracts involving state and federal funds. Most of the articles in the annual meeting at the beginning are generally routine housekeeping articles. Article 3, to see whether the town will authorize its town treasurer-collector to enter into a compensating balance agreement, or agreements for fiscal year 2011 pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 53F of the general laws, or to do or act in any manner relative therunto. Again, this is a housekeeping article, which authorizes the town treasurer to maintain sufficient balances in town accounts to avoid bank service fees. Article 4, Article 4, to act upon the reports of the selectmen and the school committee as required by statute, and upon any other reports from officers and committees who consider it expedient to do so. Again, this is a housekeeping article, which authorizes town meeting to receive and hear reports from the various elected or appointed boards and committees. Now, Article 5. Okay? Article 5?
With your permission, Claire, what I could do is, for the held articles, if you can comment on them very briefly, but that's up to you. Would you like me to do that?
Sure.
Sure. Thank you, Madam Moderator. With Madam Moderator's permission, I'll just comment on some of the financial articles that are coming up. Article 5 is the annual article having to do with setting the compensation of elected officers, that's required to be done annually under Chapter 41, Section 108. It's more than just setting the salaries, it's also raising and appropriating money, and so for that reason, it falls into the category of financial articles, which the administration will be asking to have postponed. Again, with your permission, Madam Moderator, Article 6 is the annual article for providing for a reserve fund that does require raising and appropriating or transferring, and as such, it falls into the category that will be requested to be postponed. Article 7 relates to the town's annual obligation to fund the Upper Cape Regional Vocational Technical High School. This will ask to be held. I believe you have a five-member district, ultimately, if three of the members approve this, you'd be obliged to pay, but at this point, it will be asked to be held. Article 8 is an annual article that seeks to supplement the stabilization fund, the stabilization fund is sort of a misnomer, that comes from the days, pre-prop, two and a half days, when you tried to stabilize the tax rate from getting people too much in one year, now it's more commonly referred to as a rainy day fund, it's an annual article. That will also be held because of the financial nature of it. Article 9 is the Water Pollution Control Enterprise Fund and Budget, that requires expenditure, that will ask, the meeting will be asked to hold that. Article 10 deals with the EMS budget, again, it requires expenditure, that will be held. Article 11, $40,000 for harbor service permit fees, again, this involves the transfer of funds, that, again, it will be asked for that to be held. And if I could just interject a note at this point, it's very likely that the audit will not touch on many of these articles, however, until the audit is complete, the thinking was, it was best not to jump to any conclusions, and just hold off till the audit was finished. An example of that is Article 12, where a group of annual revolving fund authorizations have been grouped together, again, it involves money, so that will be held. Article 13, that is a revolving fund being proposed by the school, again, money is involved. Article 14, we have another school revolving fund, money, $307,000, we'll ask for that to be held. Article 15, $30,000 from the parking fund to be used for federally mandated signage from municipal maintenance, expenditure, that will be put on hold. Article 16, a transfer to the general fund to provide for demolition of condemned properties, money, that will be asked to be held. Article 17 seeks an appropriation of $25,000 involving wetland protection fees, that will ask to be held, and Madam Moderator, at that point, we're on Article 18, which does not involve the expenditure of money, although possibly the receipt of money, which is a different question.
Article 18, to see if the town will vote to accept the provisions of Mass General Laws, Chapter 64 LS-2A, authorizing the imposition of a local option meals excise at a rate of .75% on the sale of restaurant meals originating within the town, or to do or act in any manner relative therunto. This article authorizes the imposition of an additional .75% to the meals excise tax on restaurant meals originating in the town. Local communities can decide to impose this additional tax, all of which comes directly to the town. It is estimated that the additional annual revenue will be over $400,000. Sir, anybody that would, has any question about Article 18? Article 19, to see if the town will vote to amend the amount of the local excise imposed under General Law, Chapter 64G, Section 3A, PM, the rental of rooms in hotels, motels, lodging houses, in bed and breakfast establishments within the town, to an amount of 6%. This article authorizes the amendment of the current local excise tax for accommodations including hotels, motels, within the town, to 6%. The town currently receives 4%. Any questions on Article 19? Article 20, Article 20 is to see if the town will vote to rescind the use of a revolving fund account allowed under Article 18 of the April 26, 2010 annual town meeting, for the purpose of passport supplies, equipment, postage, and any related expense, which was voted on May 3, 2010, under Chapter 44, Section 53E and a half of the general laws. This article authorizes the rescission of the existing revolving fund account for issuing passports. Since the town clerk's office no longer issues passports, the revolving fund is no Article 21, to see if the town will vote to amend the town of Wareham bylaws and place in the appropriate place the following addition, and this is a very lengthy barking dog bylaw.
The motion's going to have to say where. Where we put it in the bylaws.
Okay. I guess we have a little bit of time, I will read it, since copies aren't available. Mr. Andrews just brought some in, so if anyone wants a copy. "The bylaw of barking, howling nuisance, it shall be unlawful for the owner, keeper, or persons responsible for a dog to permit such dog to disrupt another person's right to peace or privacy by making loud or continuous noise which is plainly audible off the owner or keeper's premises. The provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 140, Section 157, shall be applicable to dogs exhibiting such behavior, as if said section was fully set forth herein. In the event of a failure to correct howling, barking nuisance of dogs, there shall be a $50 fine for each offense as permitted by Mass General Laws, Chapter 140, Section Section 2, Barking, Howling Nuisances: Remedies. Upon complaint of a barking, howling dog which has been creating a public nuisance for at least 10 consecutive minutes, where such noise is plainly audible at a distance of 150 feet or more from the building or premises, or in the discretion of the animal control officer, the animal control officer or any police officer may issue a written warning, which may be followed by a citation issued to the owner or keeper of the offending dog, for failure to remedy the parking, howling nuisance. Failure of the owner or keeper to remedy the nuisance may result in the issuance of penalties as set forth by the bylaws, and in any disciplinary actions voted by the board of selectmen in accordance with Mass General Laws, Chapter 140, Section 157, including but not limited to impoundment, permanent confinement, banishment from the town of Wareham, and euthanasia. Section 3, Vicious, Threatening Dogs. It shall be unlawful for the owner, keeper, or person responsible for a dog exhibiting vicious, dangerous, or potentially dangerous behavior, to fail to safeguard humans or other animals from this dog. The provisions of Mass General Laws, Chapter 140, Section 157, shall be applicable to dogs exhibiting such behavior, as if said section was fully set forth herein. In the event of a failure to safeguard people or animals from vicious dogs, there will be a $50 fine for each offense as permitted by Mass General Law, Chapter 140, Section 173A." Section 4, Dangerous, Potentially Dangerous. Dangerous, any dog which, according to the records of the animal control officer, or other appropriate authority, has inflicted injury on a human being without provocation, or has killed a domestic animal without provocation, or any dog owned or harbored primarily or in part for the purpose of a dogfighting, or any dog trained for dogfighting, or act in any manner relative thereto, and this article has been inserted by the board of selectmen at the request of the police chief. This article authorizes an amendment to the town bylaw by the addition of language regarding the identification and remedies associated with barking dogs. A fine is established. The article addresses vicious and threatening dogs, establishes a fine for failure to safeguard the public, and identifies a dangerous or potentially dangerous animal.
Claire, we're going to have to, maybe Mary Ann can help us, we're going to have to have whoever makes the motion tell us where on the bylaws. I thought we had.
Okay. Okay. Ms. Miller?
Is Chief Stanley here to address this?
I don't, I didn't see him.
I'm sorry, anybody that thinks they should euthanize a dog for barking is an idiot. And I can only urge anyone who hears this or sees this to vote this down. I know there's issues with threatening dogs, that's an entirely different situation, but to give the selectmen the power to euthanize an animal because it barks is pathetic.
Thank you. Is someone on my left?
I have to say something, because I'm the dog person in this town. I noticed when you were reading about the barking, there's no time limit. You know, I can understand a barking dog for any period of time can be really very annoying if you're trying to sleep, but during the day, there's no time there, so anytime my dog barks for more than 10 minutes, I can be subject to a fine. That's the way I'm reading that. And I'll second it, ridiculous.
Thank you. On my right, Tony over here.
Madam Moderator, forgive my question, I just got this, who's in charge of this? The dog officer, or the chief of police?
I believe it would be a combination. I really can't answer that, I'm not a doggy. Okay, we'll let council answer that.
Well, thank you, Madam Moderator, I'm just reading from it. If you look over on page 7, in the first sentence, it says, "On complaint of a barking, howling dog which has been creating a public nuisance for at least 10 continuous minutes, where such noise is plainly audible at a distance of 150 feet or more from the building or premises, or in the discretion of the animal control officer, the animal control officer or any police officer may issue a warning." So I think that's the answer.
Okay, thank you, I didn't read that. Now, this meeting is just information, all right, not arguing?
Correct.
Thank you.
My name is Joella Cruz, just for clarification, when you say 10 minutes of continuous barking, is that cumulative? Because when you have more than one dog, like, how are they going to identify which dog was barking? Like, this one had five minutes, so it stopped, and somebody else started five minutes later, like, how are you going to keep track of this? So is it a continuous 10 minutes, or do they get five minutes, they can take a five-minute break, and then they start back for five more minutes?
That's a very fair point.
Madam Moderator, just to follow up on that point, I've actually, I had the misfortune once and early in my career to handle a case like that, where the offending dog had long hair, and by the time that people caught up with it, they shaved all the hair off and dyed it a different color. So sometimes it is hard to tell, you know, who the offender is.
Can you include barking, husband?
I think that would be a debatable issue on town meeting floor, thank you, Jim.
Make a motion to amend.
Make a motion to amend, absolutely. Okay, Article 22, this is another bylaw change, "To see if the town will vote to amend its general bylaws by adding a new section, Division 11, Article 1, as follows, or to take any action relative thereto." And this is Division 11, Article 1, police detail for citizens. Section 1, should police department personnel while on duty in service to the department be dispatched or be caused to respond to an incident involving criminal activity, or disturbing the peace, trespassing, underage drinking, or assault, or a particular property or location, the police chief is hereby authorized and empowered to assign to such property or location a member or members of the department to staff such paid police detail or details as the police chief deems appropriate, to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the inhabitants of the town of Wareham. Section 2, such assignment of a detail shall only occur after the following procedures. The department shall record the number of such incidents, and after two such incidents in any 12-month period, the police chief shall cause a copy of this bylaw to be sent by regular and certified mail to the property owner or management company of record, according to the most recent records of the assessors' office. After the fourth such incident in any 12-month period, the police chief, in his discretion, should notify the property owner by certified and regular mail of his decision to assign said detail, commencing seven days after the date of such notice. The property owner may request in writing, a hearing before the chief of the department within seven days, to appeal the police chief's decision to assign a detail. The police chief shall promulgate rules, procedures, and regulations relative to same. Section 3, if after termination by the police chief of a paid detail, police department personnel while on duty in service to the department are again dispatched or caused to respond to an incident at a particular property as described in subsection A of this section, within 60 days of such termination, the police chief is hereby authorized and empowered to again assign a paid detail to such property or location as he shall deem appropriate, following the procedure as set forth in subsection B of this section. Section 4, for the purpose of this section, paid police detail shall mean one or more otherwise off-duty member or members of the Wareham Police Department, assigned by the police chief, to a particular property or location, for the purpose of presence, monitoring, patrol, supervision, and otherwise acting to maintain the peace in good order of and at the property or location to which such member or members of the police department is or are assigned. Section 5, paid police detail shall be of a minimum of four hours in duration. Section 6, the member or members of the police department staffing such paid police details shall be paid therefore at the rate set by the town of Wareham, or the Wareham Police Department, and such paid police details shall be subject to such other rules and regulations of the department that pertain to police details other than is provided for under this section. Section 7, the police chief or his designee shall keep an accurate record of the number of paid police details assigned to a particular property or location under this section, and of the number of members of the department staffing such paid police details, and the chief of the department or his designee shall forward such information to the office of the treasurer-collector. Section 8, in addition to the other duties of the treasurer-collector, it shall be the duty of, and the treasurer-collector is hereby authorized and empowered to, bill to the record owner of the particular property or location, the cost of such paid police details assigned thereto, pursuant to General Laws, Chapter 40, Section 58. The cost shall, if unpaid, become an unpaid fee for the purpose of General Laws, Chapter 40, Section 58, and become a lien on the property. Section 9, the owner of a record, the owner of record of the particular property or location to which such paid police detail or details have been assigned under this section, who has been billed for the cost of such paid police details assigned thereto pursuant to this section, shall pay to the treasurer-collector all amount so billed within 30 days of the date of such bill prepared intended by the treasurer-collector. Section 10, all amounts so collected by the treasurer-collector shall be deposited into the general fund of the city, and used to pay the member or members of the department for the service rented in staffing the paid police details provided for pursuant to this section. And this has been inserted at the request of the police chief. This article authorizes an amendment to the town bylaws relating to the requirement for police details in which the police are dispatched, or caused to respond to situations involving underage drinking, criminal activity, disturbing the peace, and other activities. After several incidents in a 12-month period, and after sufficient notice, the chief of police is authorized to provide a police detail at the property owner's expense to maintain the peace and tranquility of the neighborhood. The specifics are spelled out in the text of the proposed amendment. We had a question? Want to just wait for the mic, so that the television will pick it up, please?
I was just wondering, now, this doesn't take effect until a fourth offense? On the first offense, the police chief can't charge for the officer who goes to a call?
Yeah, that would be Section 2, Subsection 2.
Okay, Subsection 2, after the fourth such incident in any 12-month period.
So, if you're having a party, and a police officer comes and tells you to be quiet, you're not paying for a detail then, right?
I would believe not.
You don't have to pay anything?
I would believe not. I would believe not.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, 23. 23, 24, 25, 26, 27, and 28. 23, 24. Okay, 23, 24. 25. 25. 26. 27. And 27. And 28 are all articles that require appropriation, so those will be on hold. Article 23, 24, 25, 26, 27, and 28. Those will all be put on hold. Okay, Article 29. To see if the town will vote to accept General Law, Chapter 64L, Section 2A, to impose a local-room occupancy tax or to do or act in any manner. And I don't have an explanation for that one other than it's a local-room occupancy tax. I don't have any amount.
We're gonna have to take a look at if it might duplicate Article 9.
Right, okay. Counsel is advising that we may have to take a look. It might be a duplication of Article 9.
Or 19.
Or 19. Article 30 will be on hold.
Yeah, you're right. Sorry.
Okay. Okay, Article 31.
31 through...
31.
Through 36.
31 through 36 will all be on hold. So 31.
We've discussed that with the chairman and the CPC.
32, 33, 34, 35, and 36. Okay, now, Article 36, even though that is on hold, I believe we have Jesse Farrar from the land trust that wanted to offer an explanation on that. Jesse, would you like to explain that project? It should be.
So, hi. My name's Jesse Farrar. I work for the Wareham Land Trust, and we are in the business of conserving land, especially here in Wareham. And we've had our sights on the Wee Weantic River most recently, including last fall, where we protected a parcel of land up there. Article 36 that you will see, we are asking CPC to support us to the tune of $375,000, of which we will do the legwork with a grant and match that, sort of leveraging, doubling the town's investment in conservation land. And it's as simple a concept as that, except one thing we're doing differently this time around that I think people will be happy about is we're including money for a public-access parking lot. So we have negotiated, we have pending contracts with landowners, and one parcel in particular, 33 acres, right on Horseshoe, waterfront on Horseshoe Pond, will have public access. And there's established trails in there now, so it wouldn't be too hard for the town to make a nice trail system back there. And I'm available to answer any questions that you may have. I don't want to take up too much more time, but I will... Yes?
Who's holding the conservation restriction?
Who's holding the conservation restriction? Okay. So, that's a good question. Now, I don't think many of you have vision that is this good, but to answer the question about the conservation restriction is a little bit difficult because there are a lot of moving parts, and there's a couple, there's, we have, let's see, 1, 2, 3, 4, and part of a fifth parcel. So there's a lot of parcels in play here. 33, we're, the overall acreage we're protecting is 33 acres, 28 of which will be owned by the town. Five acres will be owned by the Coalition for Buzzards Bay. The five-acre parcel that the Coalition owns, the town will hold the CR on. The big parcel, the 20, I'm sorry, the, yeah, the 28-acre parcel will be owned by the town, and the plan is that the Wareham Land Trust, and maybe the Coalition will cohold the conservation restriction on that piece. So that's, that's the answer to holding the conservation restriction.
On my right. Alan, I'm sorry. Yeah, Alan?
Just a procedure question. When you came before, I think the FinCom in particular, I remember, there was some discussion about you don't have these things secured yet, so there's a question whether or not the sales for the property will or will not be made. Will the money that CPC puts aside be held until a time that you meet all your requirements or not?
All right. Will the money that the CPC puts aside for this project?
Yes, because if you're not able to procure the property, you know...
What's the last part? I'm sorry.
Alan, could you stand, please?
Sorry. What it is, is if the $375,000 goes there, the way it's listed here in the article, and you don't fill out your full requirement, I'm just questioning how that's handled. Because when you spoke at the FinCom meeting, you said you had a couple issues that had to be resolved.
Well, that's a good question. So, the, what we've done this time around to prepare for that is we have contracts in place. We, the two owners, one owner is a developer, each was in, it was a favorable position to buy, and what was unique about this was we have asked them for a purchase-and-sale agreement that is timed to expire in a year. So it gives us plenty of time to raise that grant money. If we, the major grant that we're going after, if that one were not to come through, then that gives us the ability, ability to go with Plan B and pursue some other grants. So because we have that long timeframe on the purchase-and-sale agreement, we are very confident, not only because they gave us that long agreement, but also the Wee Weantic River is a very strong candidate for state grants. We are very confident, and we have, last year, with the help from, with help from the Coalition for Buzzards Bay, the town appropriated $225,000 for a piece of land that cost $600,000. Coalition for Buzzards Bay did all the legwork, Wareham Land Trust helped out a little bit, and brought in a grant for $400,000 for the property up along the Wee Weantic River that we voted last year's article. So we have all the confidence in the world that we're gonna get this funding. The Wee Weantic River is, there is a number of ecological importance and priorities on that habitat in that area, so we're very confident. Did I answer your question?
Perhaps Nan, Nan, maybe you could answer the question to that on behalf of CPC?
Yes. CPC will not be expending any money until all the moving parts are in place and everything meets the requirements of the grant application. So we're not, we would not be giving the land trust or buying pieces unless it's all part of the whole. So we don't give out the money before the project is complete.
Does that answer your question, Mr. Slavin?
Yeah, I have a question to the moderator. If there's nothing...
Could you just wait for the mic so that it picks up on the television? Thank you.
The only question I have to the moderator is, as the article is written, does this need to have a motion on the floor to modify it to show that that, that condition will be in place?
Well, I think that's a policy that CPC has in, in place, but Nan can answer that. I mean, I think that's part of their policy.
With, with projects like this, there will be a legal grant agreement between community preservation, the Wareham Land Trust, and the Coalition for Buzzards Bay, the Wareham, CPC representing the town of Wareham. So it would not be us signing the agreement, it would be the town. And that is a standard action from CPC.
Thank you. On my left, Mrs. Gobbin. Tony, Mrs. Gobbin was first. She actually was before Alan. Yep, thank you.
That's okay. Thank you. Just a quick question to clarify. Actually, I, the question that Mr. Slavin asked was part of my question. The other part was just to clarify, the grant that you're going for is in the same amount as the amount being applied for, for CPC is $375 as well?
Yeah, the, the grant will be matched as a $360,000 grant is what, so we had a bigger opportunity. The grant that we're going after will fund as much as a half million. However, because of the limited funding, we're very happy to have the 375. And it's, it's a true match. So with this grant, it does match. Whatever you put, you can put in, they leverage it equally. So if we had a half million, if the CPC had a half million, we would have had a million dollars to spend on land acquisition, so.
On my left, Mr. Posevich.
Hi, Eddie Posevich. I don't know the location of this on the Wee Weantic River. Is it anywhere near Horseshoe Pond?
It's, yes. In fact, I have a few maps here I'm willing to share, and it's, the Horseshoe Pond, in fact, all of the parcels have some frontage on Horseshoe Pond this time around.
Okay. From actual information, have we done any soil testing in that area?
Have we, have we done any soil testing?
Yes. Because you're buying a hazardous waste site.
Absolutely, yeah. There's, well, the properties that are, that are up for this, this round will have all of the testing will be done. Environmental testing will be done for all these parcels.
Okay, because...
And that's, that's right. That will be done.
You don't want to, I have, I'm in possession of the testing results from the Horseshoe Dam area done by EPA. I don't want to get into as far as it is, but I have passed it up through the town. There's all kinds of heavy metals in that area, in the ground and in the soil, and I don't think the town wants to buy and be responsible for a land that's got hazardous waste problems with it. And I can get ahold of the land trust if you want, I can give you copies of those reports. There are very nice chemicals like arsenic, mercury, there's some other great stuff, chromium, palladium, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. That whole area around Horseshoe Pond is loaded with it.
Yeah, the, the, I'm not an expert. I know that there, there was EPA, I know that, of the test you're talking about, and one thing that was done here was the Coalition for Buzzards Bay is, is gonna be the owner of that, of the parcel that is centered right on where the Horseshoe Pond Dam was. So they're owning that. So I know that, we knew the town wouldn't have much interest in that parcel. It is a, an environmental issue. So all you can do is do diligence on that and have the test done, and that's, that's what they are doing. So the parcels that the town will be owning are further from Horseshoe Pond Dam, and they will have the environmental assessment done and soil tests done. Yes, they will, so.
Jesse, I'm assuming that prior to town meeting, before town meeting convenes, you will have some large-size maps that will be available out in the hallway that...
Yes.
People will be able to look at?
Yeah, that's right. And I'll, I'll leave some maps here for anyone who's interested to have plenty to hand out so you can have a copy.
Thank you.
Yep.
Article 37. Article 37 is to see if the town will convey to the Wareham Affordable Housing Trust Fund said parcels of land known as the Dipalo, Suban Companies, Strayer, and Marata Properties as part of the subdivision identified as Seawood Springs Development identified as follows. Map 114A, lots 101, 102, 103, 104, 5, 82, 100. Map 114B, lots 1,000, 101, 105, to 109 inclusive, 112 to 124 inclusive, 126 to 135 inclusive, 141 to 145 inclusive, 155 to 215 inclusive, lots 219, 88, 89, 93, 94, 95, 99. Map 114C-2, lots 300, 304, 319, and map 114E, lots 1,000, 379, 383, 394, in exchange for the trust paying the cost associated with the takings. These properties shall be deed restricted for the longest time allowable by law and used solely for the creation and preservation of affordable housing as defined by mass general law with the approval of the Wareham Affordable Housing Trust or to do or take any action relative thereto. This article authorizes the conveyance of several properties to the Wareham Affordable Housing Trust, which remain to be acquired by the town through the tax title process. The trust will pay the legal and administrative costs associated with the process and agrees to a long-term deed restriction identifying the properties as affordable under mass general law. The intent of the proposed article is to allow the Wareham Affordable Housing Trust Fund to work in conjunction with the treasurer-collector's office to foreclose on many parcels of vacant land in the undeveloped section of the subdivision Off-Charge Pond Road, and then transfer those properties to be used to add to the affordable housing stock in Wareham. Now, counsel has assured me that although there may be some cost in the taking that will be bringing money in, so we will be going forward with that article. Article 30, any questions? Article 38. To see if the town will vote to change the Town Charter, Article 3, Section 3-5, Board of Assessors C, the following is to be inserted after the first sentence and prior to the second sentence. Prior to the appointment of a director of assessment, the position will be properly posted in town hall, trade publications, websites, and local news media. The posting will occur no later than 30 days after the vacancy of the position. An interviewing committee shall be formed, which will consist of a minimum of three members. At least one member shall be a member of the Board of Assessors, and the remaining member shall be determined by the hiring authority. These additional members will have knowledge of the position and qualifications needed to fill the position. And this article has been submitted by petitioner Mr. Curry, and it seeks to change the Town Charter by inserting text outlining a procedure for the hiring of a director of assessment. Mr. Curry, would you like to explain the article?
Steve Curry, petitioner, also a member of the Board of Assessors. Previously, the history of last year is, as of August 1st, we had been without a director of assessment. He moved on to a different community, and our assistant assessor fulfilled the position. And since that time, she has moved on to a different community. So as of right now, the office doesn't have a director or an assistant director-assessor. The director position wasn't posted at the time of the leaving of the first assessor, and then in February, the administrator appointed our assistant to fill the position, and at the same, and then a little while later, she left. We basically just want to put language in there that if a director does leave, that the job must be posted within 30 days. That way, we can ensure that we have a director, that the information at the assessors' office can continue to do the work and get bills out in a timely manner. The last appointment in February, the Board of Assessors was not involved in any decision-making of this director, and we felt that where we have to work with this person, we'd like to be involved in picking our director to make sure that they are qualified to do the job. That's it, Madam Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. Are there any questions? Okay, Article 39. To see if the town will amend Division 3, Article 2, anti-noise regulations by adding the following changes identified in bold print. Section 1. It shall be unlawful for any person or persons occupying or having charge of any building, premises, motor vehicle, boat, or conveyance... motor vehicle, boat, or conveyance, or any part thereof in the town other than that section of any establishment licensed under Chapter 138 of the General Laws to cause or suffer or allow any unnecessary, loud, excessive, or unusual noises in the operation of any radio, phonograph, or other mechanical sound-making device or instrument, or reproducing device or instrument, or in the playing of any band, orchestra, musician, or group of musicians, or in the use of any device to amplify the aforesaid, or the making of loud outcries, exclamations, or other loud or boisterous noises, or loud and boisterous singing by any person or group of persons, or in the use of any device to amplify... Oh, I lost my place. Let me see. Or any person or group of persons are in the use of any device to amplify the aforesaid noise where the noise is plainly audible at a distance of 150 feet from the building, structure, vehicle, or premise in which or from which it is produced. The fact that the noise is plainly audible at a distance of 150 feet from the building, premise, motor vehicle, boat, or conveyance from which it originates shall constitute prima...
Primafaci.
Primafaci evidence of a violation of this bylaw. It shall be unlawful for any person or persons being in control of a motor vehicle, boat, or conveyance to cause an unnecessary, loud, excessive, or unusual noise in the operation of such vehicle, boat, or conveyance. The fact that the noise is plainly audible at a distance of 150 feet from the motor vehicle from which it originates shall constitute primafaci evidence of a violation of this bylaw. It shall be unlawful for any person or persons present or having charge of any building, premises, motor vehicle, boat, or conveyance, or any part thereof in the town other than that section of any establishment licensed under Chapter 138 of the General Laws to cause or suffer or allow between the hours of 11:00 p.m. and 7:00 a.m. any unnecessary, loud, excessive, or unusual noises in the operation of any radio, phonograph, or other mechanical sound-making device or instrument, or reproducing device or instrument, or in the playing of any band, orchestra, musician, or group of musicians, or in the use of any device to amplify the aforesaid, or the making of loud outcries, exclamations, or other loud or boisterous noises, or loud and boisterous singing by any person or group of persons, or in the use of any device to amplify the aforesaid noise. The fact that the noise occurs between 11:00 p.m. and 7:00 a.m. shall constitute primafaci evidence of a violation of this bylaw. Section 2, it shall be unlawful for any person or persons being present in or about any building, dwelling, premises, shelter, boat, or conveyance, or any part thereof other than that section of any establishment licensed under Chapter 138 of the General Laws who shall cause or suffer or countenance any loud, unnecessary, excessive, or unusual noises, including any loud, mechanical sound-making device or instrument, or reproducing device or instrument, or in the exclamations, or other loud or boisterous noises, or loud and boisterous singing by a person or group of persons, or in the use of any device to amplify the aforesaid noises where the aforesaid noises is plainly audible at a distance of 150 feet from the building, dwelling, premises, shelter, boat, or conveyance in which it is produced. The fact that the noise is plainly audible at a distance of 150 feet from the building, dwelling, premises, from which it originates shall constitute primafaci evidence on a violation of this bylaw. Any person shall be deemed in violation of this bylaw who shall make or aid or cause or suffer or countenance or assist in the making of the aforesaid and described improper noise, disturbance, breach of peace, and the presence of any person or persons in or about the building, dwelling, premises, shelter, boat, or conveyance or part thereof during a violation of this bylaw shall constitute primafaci evidence that they are countenance to such violation. Section 3, owner of any building, dwelling, structure, premise, or shelter which is let, rented, or leased shall provide any and all tenants, lessees, and sublesses with a copy of all sections of this bylaw. Section 4, this article shall not be applicable to fire signals or alarms, or to sounds emanating from police, fire, or other governmental or emergency vehicles. Section 5, any person violating the provisions of this bylaw shall be punished by a fine not to exceed $200 for each offense. This article seeks to amend the anti-noise regulations by adding language to include motor vehicle, boat, or conveyance and other defining language as printed in the article. A quiet time is established between 11:00 p.m. and 7:00 a.m. This is a petitioned article by Mr. Posevich. Do you wish to speak to it, Mr. Posevich?
Good evening, Eddie Posevich. This is, in our opinion, a much-needed update to our current anti-noise bylaw. The easiest way, the reason this is in bold is our current bylaw on anti-noise is totally included in this. It's in regular print. The only additions that are occurring are the ones that are in bold print. The explanation there, you could pull over, it's a violation if I'm playing my radio too loud. But if I've got glass packs on my car and it's making a tremendous noise, they couldn't pull me over. We're trying to get this updated so it does cover it. And I'll admit, I was involved in this. It's a matter of a lot of cutting and pasting from other towns' anti-noise bylaws. It does create a quiet time between 11:00 and 7:00 a.m., excluding any establishments that are licensed under 138, and those are your liquor licenses. So it doesn't interfere with them. And it also has a provision for exemptions, which we didn't have, which is police and emergency vehicles. It also has a requirement that all of the various other anti-noise bylaws had, is that's to provide a copy of it to any leases that are involved in leasing homes or summer rentals that are down here so that they know what the requirements are as far as the noise is concerned. And that's basically it. So what this does is anything in bold print is new. Anything in regular print is our old bylaw. And the total old bylaw is, in fact, involved here.
Thank you. Any questions on Article 39? Article 40. To see if the town will vote to accept the layout of Rockmash Road, Assessors' Map 56, Lot 1025, Brown Street, Wareham, as approved by the Board of Selectmen on October 19, 2010, and presented to the Wareham Town Clerk on October 20, 2010, as a public way, together with the adjoining drainage easements, as shown on the plan entitled, "Site Plan Phase 5 for Rockmash Village, Wareham, Massachusetts, prepared by Atlantic Design Engineers LLC of Sandwich, Mass., dated December 4, 2007, which was recorded at the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds on December 11, 2007, Plan Book 53, Page 935, and to raise and appropriate a transfer of some of money to complete construction of the roadway." This is a petition article.
It's a petition.
Petition article. Petition article. Yeah, this would be up to, Council has advised that this is a money article, but this would be up to the petitioner because it is a petition article. I don't see the petitioner here. And I believe this is an article that came before us last fall and is back again. Mr. Slavin?
Through Madam Moderator, the article did come before us before. I'm asking my question as a member of the Planning Board. We're under the impression, the Planning Board, that the town and the petitioners had come up with an agreement on paying for the cost of this through a betterment. And there's nothing in this particular article that shows that. It doesn't show authorize, you know, to borrow money, et cetera. So I have a question that before town meeting comes, we have a confirmation that there is a signed betterment agreement or something in place. If not, it's exactly as it was before.
Thank you, Mr. Slavin. Article 41. To see if the town shall repeal Article 5, Section 580, Wind Energy Facilities in its entirety, sections, I believe it's sections 500, 581, 582, 583, 583.1, 583.2, 583.3, 583.4, 583.5, 583.6, 583.7, 583.8, 583.9, 583.10, 583.11, 584, 584, 585.1, 585.2, 585.3, 585.4, 585.5, 585.6, 585.7, 585.8, 585.9, 585.10, 585.11, 585.12, 585.13, of the zoning bylaws of the town of Wareham. We also stipulate that the town moderator to establish a Wind Energy Review Committee consisting of seven members and appoint no later than June 1, 2011, two citizens-at-large, the town planner, one member of the Zoning Board of Appeals, one member of the Conservation Commission, one member of the Board of Assessors, and the Director of Inspection Services to do a complete study of the effects of wind turbines on the town of Wareham. This study with recommendations shall be completed and submitted to the annual Springtown Meeting of 2012 in writing. Recommendations shall be part of the report, but no bylaw shall be submitted for placement on the warrant in conjunction with the report or to act in any manner relative thereto. Okay, I believe this is a petitioned article that was inserted by former Selectman Ekstrom. You don't see her here. This article seeks to completely repeal Article 5, Section 580, Wind Energy Facilities. The article further stipulates the appointment of a committee to study wind energy issues and report to the Springtown Meeting in 2012. No bylaw is to be presented at that time. Any questions? Article 42. To see if the town will vote to amend the general bylaws of the town of Wareham by deleting in its entirety Division 6, Article 2A, nitrogen net zero for new construction, including all related subsections thereto. Again, this is a petitioned article by Mr. Brady. And this article authorizes an amendment to the general bylaws to the extent that the nitrogen net zero for new construction found in Division 6, Article 2A, and related subsections be deleted. And I don't see Mr. Brady here for any explanation. Okay, the special. Can we do the special?
Sure.
Okay. Sure. We're going to go to the special town meeting?
They're all money articles, right?
Okay. Okay, I'm going to let Council walk us through the special. There are, most of them are money articles. And since he has had the meeting with the officials this afternoon, he's more in tune and can explain to us how we will handle the special town meeting.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Article 1 is a financial article that involves transfers between different line items. That will be held. Article 2 relates to a transfer of $51,500 for an amount, from Article 30 of the Fall Town Meeting, that amount was encumbered and it is available. And it's to fund a collective bargaining agreement with one of the unions. That one can go forward because that money is available. And the town also does have obligations under General Laws, Chapter 150E, to timely present settled collective bargaining agreements to the town meeting. And so that's why you'd be moving forward on that one. Article 3 is a financial article, so that will be held. Article 4 is not only a financial article, but there may be a different way to accomplish the same result by adjusting the annual recapitulation sheet that's submitted to the state so that no town meeting action would be necessary. Article 5 is a, can go forward. This would call for a transfer of $200,000 to help pay for the emergency pipe repairs that were made on the Independence Bridge. As you may recall, that was a sewer pipe that was about to break because of its great age. And with the approval of the Department of Revenue and the Division of Capital Asset Management of the state, the town was authorized to spend this money on an emergency basis to replace this pipe. Otherwise, you'd have had all kinds of effluent going into the bay. So this one, because of the DOR approval, is ready for action. Article 6 is a financial article that would be held, as is Article 7. Articles 8 through 13 are collective bargaining articles. They've been placed on the warrant as placeholders in the event that any of these collective bargaining agreements could have been settled by the time of the special town meeting. Depending on whether any of them are wrapped up by the special town meeting or not, they might go forward, they might not. Although, at this point, my guess is that they would probably be held because of the status of negotiations. Thank you.
Thank you. So it looks as if on the special town meeting, we have Article 2 and 5. Article 2 is to see if the town will vote to transfer $51,500 from the amount incumbent by Article 30 of the Fall Town Meeting to fund collective bargaining agreement not yet settled in order to fund the collective bargaining agreement between the town and IAFF Local 2895 Wareham EMT Association or to do or act in any manner relative thereto. As of the Fall Town Meeting 2010, a number of union contracts had not been settled. Funds were set aside in Article 30 to support the contracts when settled. The IAFF Local 2895 Wareham EMT Association was settled in December 2010 for $51,500. In order to fund this settlement, the legislative body, town meeting, is required to approve the funding source. The remaining balance under Article 30, should this article be approved, will be $87,848, which will continue to be held in reserve for the future settlement of contracts. I think that's pretty explanatory. Does anyone have a question? Article 5. To see if the town will vote to transfer $200,000 from the Water Pollution Control Facility Fund Balance Reserve for debt to fund balance reserved for expenditures to fund the emergency replacement and/or repair of the sewer mains located at the Independence Bridge in the onset section of town in order to maintain public health and safety. During February 2011, a corroded sewer main was discovered at the Independence Bridge in onset. The Wareham Pollution Control Facility immediately addressed the situation and secured bids to complete the project. In order to fund the emergency repair, the Department of Revenue was notified by the Board of Selectmen Sewer Commissioners requesting to fund this emergency by reducing the reserve for debt by $200,000 and move the funding for Fund Balance Reserve for expenditures. Although this is not a use of retained earnings, it does have the same result by allowing the repairs and replacement to go forward. Any questions on that article? I think that takes care of the articles that we will be addressing at town meeting. Mr. Curry?
Madam Moderator, Steve Curry, Chairman, Board of Assessors. I'd like to ask a question on Article 3. I know it's a transfer of funds and it was put on hold. But where our department has not had a Director of Assessment or an Assistant. The state mandates that we do the revaluation. This is not an interim year, but actual full revaluation. And I believe through the DOR, I don't have the chapter and verse, that the money is needed to do this revaluation. This year, we've actually had to hire out...